The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, October 11th, 2022, is now called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation which will be given this evening by Imam Muhammad Sirajuddin from the Islamic Society of Michiana.
Aye. Pledge of Allegiance. Amen. The United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear wise and loving God, firstly, let me say, thank you, on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the opportunity to serve your creation, for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for the freedom and for the unity in this diversity. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. Our Lord, you are all-wise, almighty. Grant our leaders wisdom and guide them to use their power to serve the good of all and to fashion a more just, peaceful, and caring world. Lord of mercy and compassion, graciously grant our mayor and council members compassion to listen to the people they serve. Grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time. Instill in their hearts a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting. Grant them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. Bless our agenda tonight, to be fruitful and for the common good. Our Lord, accept our prayers, grant our requests, and purify our hearts from ego, greed, and selfishness. Bless us all. Bless the city of South Bend and our county with peace, prosperity, and the pursuit of happiness. Amen. Let it be so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next are petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 13th, 2022, public hearing? Do I hear a second?
Do I hear a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from the September 13th, 2022, public hearing are approved. Report from the county auditor.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Report from county commissioners.
Carl Baxmeyer, Board of Commissioners, offices on the seventh floor. Just wanted to report that some time ago, Clay Township asked to have control or ownership of the park in Clay Township transferred from the county to the township. The first step in that is to have a boundary and legal description, survey and legal description prepared, and we took the first steps in that today by retaining Dan Charner to do that work and report back to us as soon as possible. So that is underway, and we wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Report from any council special committee.
Mr. Morton.
Mr. Katanzrath.
I'd like to recognize that St. Matt's Cathedral Boy Scout troop, 111, is joining us tonight. I'm guessing they're probably here working on their citizenship and community merit badge. Would I welcome here to our council meeting, Mr. President?
Thank you very much. Welcome. Next, our first readings. Clerk, will you please read bill number 14622?
14622, an ordinance approving change in fee amount for mortgage foreclosure sales. Petitioner, Sheriff.
Bill number 14622 is assigned to the Human Services Criminal Justice Committee.
Bill 14722, an ordinance amending and supplementing an appendix schedule on fines and fees for the St. Joseph County Department of Health. Petitioner, Health Department.
Bill number 14722 is assigned to the Human Services Criminal Justice Committee.
14822, an ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of certain capital improvements and incidental expenses in connection therewith and the costs of issuance of the bonds. Petitioner, Catherine Finello.
Bill number 14822 is assigned to the Budget Administration Committee.
14922, an ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council appropriating proceeds of the general obligation bonds. Petitioner, Catherine Finello.
Bill number 14922 is assigned to the Budget and Administration Committee.
15022, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Use, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at 62550 State Road 931, from A Agricultural District to C Commercial District. Petitioner, Lance D. Rousch and Victoria L. Rousch.
Bill number 15022 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
15122, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Use, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for an unaddressed property located on the north side of Jackson Road approximately 730 feet east of 14387 Jackson Road, from our single-family district to C Commercial District. Petitioner, Donald J. and Sue A. Weaver.
Bill number 15122 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill 15222, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Use, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at unaddressed 84-plus acre parcel located on the east side of State Road 931, south of and abutting 68294 State Road 931, from A Agricultural District to PUD Planned Unit Development District. Petitioner, Bob Fights.
Bill number 15222 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
15322, an ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County public way or public place. Petitioner, Kenneth E. Sebastian, Sr., Eleanor A. Sebastian, Kenneth E. Sebastian, Jr., and their assigns.
Bill number 15322 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes first readings for this evening. Next on the agenda, the adoption of the solid waste management, St. Joseph County Airport Authority and the St. Joseph County 2023 Budget Clerk. Will you please read bill number 12222?
12222, ordinance for appropriations and tax rates, Budget Form 4, solid waste.
May I have a motion on bill number 12222?
For approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill number 12222 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Cantor Ricky. Any further comments on it, from any council member, on 12222? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrath.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 12222 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number 12322?
12322, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates, Budget Form 4, Airport Authority.
May I have a motion on bill number 12322?
motion for passage.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass. Bill number 12322 was made by Councilman Katanzrath. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrath.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 12322 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number 12422?
12422, ordinance for appropriations to tax rates, Budget Form 4, St. Joseph County, Indiana.
May I have a motion on bill number 12422?
For approval.
Do I hear a second? A motion to pass. Bill number 12422 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Cantor Ricky. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File.
File.
Aye.
Alrighty. Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrath.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Let the record show that bill number 12422 was passed by a unanimous vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number 12522?
12522, an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County, Indiana, for the year 2023.
May I have a motion on bill number 12522?
For approval.
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill number 12522 was made by Councilman Cantor Ricky. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrath.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Let the record show that bill number 12522 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Bill number 12922, under resolutions, is tabled until next month. Next on the agenda, we have salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read bill number 13122?
An ordinance amending ordinance is 9521, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022. Petitioner, Maintenance.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, bill number 13122 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening, council. Brian Davidson, 227 West Jefferson, offices in the basement of this building. This ordinance is for salary amendments for pay for various employees within the maintenance department, which includes housekeeping staff, maintenance staff, security staff, and supervisor staffs. This is for retroactive pay from July 1st to the end of this year.
Any questions from council for the petitioner?
What's the reason for the retroactive pay?
We've been pretty short staff, and our staff has done what I think an excellent job of holding through and sticking through here to get everything done that we do on a daily basis.
I don't think a lot of other departments would like retroactive pay.
I'm sorry?
I'd say I think a lot of other departments would like retroactive pay, so I don't quite understand.
Brian, this is budget neutral because you've been unable to fill those positions, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any council member on 13122? Hearing none, we'll open up.
Not a question, but so much as a comment, I just wanted to tell Brian, you know, thank you for getting creative and doing exactly what we asked you to do within your budget to get the pay and the people to kind of get the ball rolling that you needed. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, we'll open up the public hearing on bill number 13122. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on 13122. Do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill number 13122 was made by Councilman Cantor Ricky. It was seconded by Councilman Root. Any further comments on 13122? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrath.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 13122 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda? Bill number 13222?
An ordinance amending ordinance is 9521, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022. Petitioner, Maintenance.
This ordinance, again, is in the same manner, taking care of the same people with that retroactive pay.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, bill number 13222 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the petitioner on 13222?
There again, can you explain this a little bit further about the situation here?
It's the same situation, we're just drawn out of several budgets. That's, each one of those is coming out of a different budget, that's why there's more than one ordinance.
Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on 13222. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on 13222. Do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Second.
A motion to pass. Bill number 13222 was made by Councilman Cantor Ricky. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on 13222? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzrath.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Let the record show that bill number 13222 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda? Bill number 13322?
13322, an ordinance amending ordinance 9521, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022. Petitioner, Maintenance.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, bill number 13322 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
This ordinance is also for salary amendments and retroactive pay from July till December this year.
Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none. Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number 13322. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on 13322. Do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill number 13322 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrath.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 13322 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number 13422?
13422, an ordinance amending ordinance 9521, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022. Petitioner, Maintenance. This man's on fire. This guy's amazing. No stopping him.
Last one, same situation. It's retroactive pay from July to December this year for our employees and maintenance.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, bill number 13422 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number 13422. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on 13422. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
For approval.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass. Bill number 13422 was made by Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussion? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrath.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 13422 was passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you for your time, council.
Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda? Bill number 13522?
An ordinance amending ordinance 9521, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022. Petitioner, Health Department.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. Morton, bill 13522 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Petitioner?
Amy?
Where's she at? You're muted still, Amy? shoot.
Petitioner?
She's on there.
See her? There she is.
Hi, this is Amy Rupee, Administrator for the Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the county city building, and I apologize, I was not paying attention. What bill is this on?
This is...
13522.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we're a pretty exciting group, can't imagine your attention drifted away, but it's alright, I understand it.
Oh, oh, I apologize, I am so sorry.
No, it's alright.
Yeah, this is, this is for a grant received from the State Department of Health due to the fact that they had lowered the lead level for children, so we're going to have to do a lot more case monitoring since they did lower the level to 3.5. So this is to hire staff to be able to handle that extra workload.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill 13522. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on 13522?
For approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill number 13522 was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Cantor Ricky. Any further comments from any council member on 13522? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrath.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 13522 was passed by a unanimous vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda? Bill number 13922?
An ordinance amending ordinance 9521, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022. Petitioner, Prosecutor?
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
This comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Yes, Bob Reisenhofer, Prosecutor's Office, offices on the 10th floor of this building. We're here asking for a salary appropriation and appropriation for $14,262. This is to, to... Okay, found it. This is the increase that pay for the chief deputy prosecutor, which puts him in line with the state guidelines. This is paid from the prosecutor's pretrial diversion funds.
Any questions from council for Mr. Reisenhofer? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill 13922. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on 13922?
For approval.
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill number 13922 was made by Councilman Cantor Ricky. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrath.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Let the record show that bill number 13922 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number 14022?
An ordinance amending ordinance 9521, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022. Petitioner, Prosecutor?
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. Morton, bill 14022 comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reisenhofer?
This is a request for, to reimburse two deputy attorneys for participation in the fact program. They're on 24-hour, seven days a week, so this is to reimburse them for that. This is also paid out of the prosecutor's pretrial diversion.
Any questions for the petitioner from council? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number 14022. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on 14022. Do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Second.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing on one forty twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
No for approval.
Second. Motion to pass, Bill number one forty twenty-two was made by Councilman Nolan, it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on one forty twenty-two? Hearing done, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one forty twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number one forty-one twenty-two?
An ordinance amending ordinance ninety-five twenty-one, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of San Jose County for the year 2022. Prosecutor?
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, Bill one forty-one twenty-two comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
This is an appropriation and salary request for the Adult Protective Services Grant, that comes from the state.
Any questions from counsel for Mr. Reisenhoover? Hearing done, we'll now open a public hearing on one forty-one twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing on one forty-one twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
No for approval.
Second. Motion to pass, Bill number one forty-one twenty-two was made by Councilwoman Hess, it was seconded by Councilman Katanzarite. Any further council discussion on one forty-one twenty-two? Hearing done, clerk, will you please take the roll? Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
And Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one forty twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number one forty-two twenty-two?
An ordinance amending ordinance ninety-five twenty-one, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of San Jose County for the year 2022. Petitioner, prosecutor?
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, Bill one forty-two twenty-two comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
This is a request for appropriation and salary amendment, paid from the HERO Special Gifts Fund. This is for the commander of the cybercrime units, who is retiring and will become a part-time employee of the prosecutor.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel for Mr. Reisenhoover? Hearing done, we'll open a public hearing on Bill one forty-two twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing on one forty-two twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
No for approval.
Second. Motion to pass, Bill number one forty-two twenty-two was made by Councilman Canada Ricky, it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing done, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Aye.
And Ms. Hess.
Yes.
And Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one forty-two twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read Bill number one forty-four twenty-two?
An ordinance amending ordinance ninety-five twenty-one, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of San Jose County for the year 2022. Petitioner, prosecutor?
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please.
President Morton, Bill one forty-four twenty-two comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
This is an appropriation and salary amendment for a stop violence against women grant, that the prosecutor received. It's a one-year grant.
Any questions from counsel? Hearing done, we'll open a public hearing on one forty-four twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing done, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on one forty-four twenty-two?
No for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass, Bill number one forty-four twenty-two was made by Councilwoman Hess, it was seconded by Councilman Canada Ricky. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing done, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one thirty-eight twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read Bill number one thirty-eight twenty-two?
An ordinance appropriating monies for the purposes herein specified for the several departments here enlisted of San Jose County Government.
May I have a motion on Bill number one thirty-eight twenty-two?
No for approval.
Second. Motion to pass, Bill number one thirty-eight twenty-two was made by Councilman Canada Ricky, it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing done, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one thirty-eight twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number one forty-two twenty-two?
An ordinance amending ordinance ninety-five twenty-one, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of San Jose County for the year 2022. Petitioner, prosecutor?
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, Bill one forty-two twenty-two comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
This is a request for appropriation and salary amendment, paid from the HERO Special Gifts Fund. This is for the commander of the cybercrime units, who is retiring and will become a part-time employee of the prosecutor.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel for Mr. Reisenhoover? Hearing done, we'll open a public hearing on Bill one forty-two twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing on one forty-two twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
No for approval.
Second. Motion to pass, Bill number one thirty-eight twenty-two was made by Councilman Canada Ricky, it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing done, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one thirty-eight twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read Bill number one forty-two twenty-two?
An ordinance appropriating monies for the purposes herein specified for the departments here enlisted of San Jose County Government.
May I have a motion on Bill number one thirty-two twenty-two? No for approval. Second. Motion to pass, Bill number one thirty-eight twenty-two was made by Councilman Canada Ricky, it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing done, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one thirty-eight twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda, Bill number one thirty-seven twenty-two? One thirty-seven twenty-two. An ordinance appropriating monies for the purposes herein specified for the departments here enlisted of San Jose County Government. Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill number one thirty-seven twenty-two comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Jeff Jarniki, Executive Director, Visit South Bend, Michoacan, with an address of one zero one North Michigan, Suite three hundred, in South Bend. As previously shared, these funds are appropriation in the current fiscal year to pay for the debt service on the bonds that are issued by the city of South Bend for the zoo. This was a result of the impact of the increase in the innkeeper's tax within San Joseph County from sixty percent to eight percent.
Any questions from counsel for the petitioner? Hearing done, we'll open a public hearing on Bill number one thirty-seven twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing on one thirty-seven twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
No for approval.
Second. Motion to pass, Bill number one thirty-seven twenty-two was made by Councilman Canada Ricky, it was seconded by Councilman Katanzarite. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing done, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one thirty-seven twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read Bill number one thirty-eight twenty-two?
An ordinance appropriating monies for the purposes herein specified for the departments here enlisted of San Jose County Government.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill number one thirty-eight twenty-two comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Jeff Jarniki, Executive Director, Visit South Bend, Michoacan, with an address of one zero one North Michigan, Suite three hundred, in South Bend. As previously shared, these funds are appropriation in the current fiscal year to pay for the debt service on the bonds that are issued by the city of South Bend for the zoo. This was a result of the impact of the increase in the innkeeper's tax within San Joseph County from sixty percent to eight percent.
Any questions from counsel for the petitioner? Hearing done, we'll open a public hearing on Bill number one thirty-seven twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing on one thirty-seven twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
No for approval.
Second. Motion to pass, Bill number one thirty-seven twenty-two was made by Councilman Canada Ricky, it was seconded by Councilman Katanzarite. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing done, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one thirty-seven twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda, Bill number one thirty-seven twenty-two? One thirty-seven twenty-two. An ordinance appropriating monies for the purposes herein specified for the departments here enlisted of San Jose County Government. Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill number one thirty-eight twenty-two comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Jeff Jarniki, Executive Director, Visit South Bend, Michoacan, with an address of one zero one North Michigan, Suite three hundred, in South Bend. As previously shared, these funds are appropriation in the current fiscal year to pay for the debt service on the bonds that are issued by the city of South Bend for the zoo. This was a result of the impact of the increase in the innkeeper's tax within San Joseph County from sixty percent to eight percent.
Any questions from counsel for the petitioner? Hearing done, we'll open a public hearing on Bill number one thirty-seven twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing done, the public hearing is now closed on one thirty-seven twenty-two. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
No for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass, Bill number one thirty-six twenty-two was made by Councilwoman Hess, it was seconded by Councilman Katanzarite. Any further council discussion on one thirty-six twenty-two? Hearing done, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Let the record show that Bill number one thirty-six twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read Bill number one forty-two twenty-two? Thank you. That concludes public hearings this evening. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Next is new business. Next is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes, on items not on tonight's agenda.
Good evening. Deborah Doral, two one six seven seven, Otten Road, South Bend. President Morton, I'd like to formally thank you and the council members, and specifically direct my appreciation to Bobby Krasinski. And by way of doing that, I'd like to announce that you have scheduled time in your next committee meeting for a special presentation to the council on Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, at five thirty P.M. in this room, to hear, and the public is invited but cannot speak, to hear Rebecca Go, Director of Saint Mary's College, Office for the Common Good, and Megan Zwort, Ph.D., Associate Professor and Chair of the Department of Philosophy, and Director of the Dialogue Project at Saint Mary's. They will share about the college's efforts to promote productive dialogue, community engagement, and nonpartisan voter participation on campus. They will also share some ideas for collaboration between the county and Saint Mary's on these important issues. Also, on the topic of productive dialogue, I'd like to express my appreciation for and encourage participation in the comprehensive plan work being guided by Rundel Ernstberger Associates and the residents' participation. I feel this is one of the most effective contributions that we can have for the future, and everyone is doing an excellent job, beyond our expectations and far beyond a formality. This is the real deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Charlotte Wolf, two one four three nine, Osborne Road, Lakeville.[945.51]
Hearing done, we'll open a public hearing on 13822. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing done, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on 13822?
No approval.
Motion to pass, Bill Number 13822 was made by Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Councilman Kennericki. Any further council discussion? Hearing done, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Kennericki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
And Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Record show that Bill Number 13822 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next, under American Rescue Plan Fund, Bill Number 13622. Clerk, will you please read that bill?
An ordinance appropriating monies for the purposes herein specified for the department here enlisted of St. Joseph County Government.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill Number 13622 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening, council members. My name is Al Kurzits. I'm the St. Joseph County Emergency Management Agency Director with offices at 125 South Lafayette Boulevard across the street from here. I ask for favorable passage of this ordinance. It will use $1.59 million of American Rescue Plan funds to rework our sirens. We have 67 early warning sirens. Most 60 of them date back to 1999. They need upgrades. We are the envy of some of the counties within the state of Indiana for having this robust network, and we need to upgrade it. I ask for favorable passage.
Thank you very much. Any questions from counsel for Mr. Kurzits? Hearing done, we'll open a public hearing on 13622. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing done, the public hearing is now closed on 13622. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
No approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass, Bill Number 13622 was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Katanzarite. Any further council discussion on 13622? Hearing done, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Yes.
Mr. Kennericki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Record show that Bill Number 13622 was passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public hearings this evening. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Next is new business. Next is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes on items not on tonight's agenda.
Good evening. Deborah Doral, 21677, Otten Road, South Bend. President Morton, I'd like to formally thank you and the council members, and specifically direct my appreciation to Bobby Krasinski. And by way of doing that, I'd like to announce that you have scheduled time in your next committee meeting for a special presentation to the council on Tuesday, October 25, at 5:30 PM in this room to hear, and the public is invited but cannot speak, Rebecca Go, Director of St. Mary's College Office for the Common Good, and Megan Zwort, PhD Associate Professor and Chair of the Department of Philosophy and Director of the Dialogue Project at St. Mary's. They will share about the college's efforts to promote productive dialogue, community engagement, and nonpartisan voter participation on campus. They will also share some ideas for collaboration between the county and St. Mary's on these important issues. Also, on the topic of productive dialogue, I'd like to express my appreciation for and encourage participation in the comprehensive plan work being guided by Rundel Ernstberger Associates and the residents' participation. I feel this is one of the most effective contributions that we can have for the future, and everyone is doing an excellent job beyond our expectations and far beyond a formality. This is the real deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Charlotte Wolf, 21439, Osborne Road, Lakeville. I would like to just make a statement that's in general, my feelings about this body's decisions concerning who gets a zoning variance and who gets a favorable recommendation. I'd like to question the decisions and suggest that there's a much different standard applied depending on who is asking for a zoning variance. And this idea that I have is in reference to the IEC. The zoning restrictions have in the past said no to a house going in when it's next to an industrial development. However, again, in reference to the IEC, industry is allowed to plop smack into the middle of a residential and farming district, resulting in decreased property values and rural quality of life. County residents pay for the infrastructure, the tax abatement, the TIFs, and who knows what else to lure this industry. And all of this is happening when industry and jobs are greatly needed in city centers like South Bend where infrastructure is already present. Travel times and fuel use to get to these jobs are much greater than if industry could be located within city limits. And I don't believe that enough thought is being given to reducing vehicle travel, which would decrease infrastructure demands out in the county. So I've been speaking up here and showing up mostly within the last five years, and I have to say that this IEC project has spurred my interest. I do have an academic background, and I'm a teacher at my learning farm in Lakeville. So it is not an easy thing for me to get up and speak. It takes time and it takes energy. I don't feel that the time and energy that I put in has been valued or others like me. The three-minute, this three-minute protocol, although I appreciate your service, I don't think that the three-minute people really are that much appreciated. The citizen involvement structure, I would challenge this body to develop an alternative, genuine discourse. And an example would be, again, referring to what the previous speaker said, the comprehensive plan revision dialogue has been true dialogue and citizen input, and I very much appreciate that. So other progressive communities have already substituted and gotten rid of this. St. Joseph County can do better. Let's stop following these old outdated playbooks and start being leaders in our state with ideas that benefit all the citizens and not just promote projects that are lining the pockets of cronies. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. After having gone through the redistricting fiasco in the spring, wasting hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money, taxpayer-funded redistricting, as it were, the name-calling, the finger-pointing, just the wasting of tax dollars, and it was by both sides, a curse on both your houses. Both sides were involved in that. We come now to this, everything that's in the news right now about what went on at the election center with the ballot boxes. This, why it is that we can't let the Indiana State Police do their job, why we have to start spending taxpayer dollars again, which causes a reaction by the other side saying, well, I guess we got to spend taxpayer dollars to defend ourselves, which brings a counterlaw, and everybody starts filing lawsuits. Stand down and allow the state police to do their job. Do not try to do something or hire somebody to do something that is unnecessary. Or it may, it might be necessary, depending on the findings of the Indiana State Police, but let's let them decide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Ham, St. Joseph County Auditor, with offices on the second floor here in the county city building. I don't think anything I'm going to say here is going to change anything, but I'm going to say it anyway. As most of you know, I've been involved in government about 20 years in politics for more than that, since I was running around handing out brochures for Doug Hunt, for my grandpa on the west side of South Bend. Been involved in a lot of campaigns, ran a lot of campaigns, did a lot of ads in my life. But I got to say, the attacks that I saw on our clerk, Rita Glenn, crossed the line in a major way. Now, great, have the state police investigate it. Should we spend money on another investigation? No, huge waste of time. I agree with Mr. Caruso. The thing that's upsetting, I mean, I know that those of us who've worked with Rita and know her just see how absolutely ludicrous the whole dang charge is. And there's a lot of Republicans I know that feel this way. I haven't talked to them, but common sense tells me that they look at this and they go, man, that's over the line. That lady wouldn't do that. This lady that worked all these years in county government, serving people, and then is going out on this note, really? Now, it's one thing when this crap happens on the national level. We all kind of look at it and we expect it. But it's happening here locally, and it's wrong. And I'm bothered also from some of the Republicans, the silence from some of the Republicans. Who know it's wrong, who aren't telling folks to stand down. Mr. Root, October 2017, you were getting roasted in the press for some ridiculous measure. I don't know what it was, but you were being maligned unfairly. I backed you up publicly. I could have let you twist and win, but I didn't do that. And I got a lot of grief from people for it. But it was the right thing to do, and I'd do it again. But I just hope there's some Republicans who know better, who know this woman, who say, stand down, take that damn ad off the TV, because it's wrong. It's terrible, and it's vicious. That's not who we are as a community. It's not who we are. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ben Malinowski, 6237 Exeter Court. I rise to express my appreciation for your hospitality through the BSA Scouts of Troop 111. This is a troop in which I was a member and earned my rank as Eagle. I'm extremely proud that these two boys behind me, my brother and friend, are on the same path. Again, I thank you for your assistance to these boys as they continue on their path to distinguished rank of Eagle. I would also like to thank this council for uplifting me this evening. Our country is often portrayed as a deeply divided one, especially in affairs of our government. I may be incorrect, but however, I believe each bill was unanimously approved this evening. Thank you for this demonstration to myself and to the scouts of cooperation and democracy in action. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before I call for a motion to adjourn, I would like to thank each member of this council and everyone involved in the long and tedious many hours that everyone put into the budget process. I can't thank each member enough for their participation, their input, and the discussion that we had at each budget meeting. And I know sometimes in the summertime, it's kind of tough to make it in for extra meetings, but everyone did a great job. And I can't thank Mr. Dalton enough for his expertise, and there again, each and every one on this council that put in, there again, a lot of hours and a lot of thoughtful discussion. And we ended up with, like the gentleman just alluded to, a unanimous vote of passing the 2023 budget for St. Joe County. Thank you very much.
And I want to add appreciation for my chief deputy who put in all the hours, too, so...
Mr. Murphy, I'm so sorry.
He worked a lot harder.
Yeah.
We have a lot of hours, Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, so, yes.
Yeah, we know. We know all about that.
Yeah, Mr. Murphy, will you please forgive me?
No, no, I'm out of...
But no, all kidding aside, thanks for everyone who participated in us getting to this point for the 2023 St. Joseph County budget. Thank you very much.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.